I'd like to call the Dover Select Ward meeting to order at 1:45 PM on Thursday, July 14. First item on the agenda, discuss the 2022 tax rate. 2022 tax rate. Marco, can you talk to us?
Sure. So we received the education tax rate from the state just recently. And the grand list, the final grand list was lodged, so we're prepared to set the tax rate for the upcoming year. The, based on all the calculations on the application of funds, the total homestead rate setting is 2.1499. An increase of just under five cents. The total non-homestead rate would be 2.0148, an increase of just under two cents. So.
Um, so we did not have a surplus this year.
Technically we did, but because we brought the tax rate down last year by 500,000, we ended the year negative 200, which we really didn't. So we're even. The grand list is increased by about 37 million to just about 1.059 billion. Put all the numbers through and that's where we get 2.1499 on the homestead and 2.0148 on the non.
Anybody have any comments or discussion about this?
I have a harder time conceptualizing. What does this represent if you had a property that was worth $100,000?
$48 a year.
$48 a year on 100,000. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Joe, did you get those numbers?
No.
Our, our tax rate is going up for homestead 4.85 cents and for non-homestead 1.96. Because they cut the non-homestead school statewide educational tax by three cents. I'm giving Joe a moment in case he has any questions. All right. Does somebody want to make a motion to set the tax rate?
No.
Here we go.
We can just sit here endlessly. All right. I make a motion that we set the homestead rate, educational plus municipal at 2.1499 and the total non-homestead rate, educational plus municipal at 2.0148.
I'll second it for Joe.
Anything else on the tax rate? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Janice, thank you.
And we set the sign, those educational stats.
Does this?
Correct. That's the back.
Of this?
That's the back of that.
Of this.
What is going on?
Are you seeing the entrance?
The hat just happened.
It's coming back to you.
Yeah, basically. I know Randy's there, but I can't see him.
No, no, I meant like on Zoom. It's like Tim just popped in and I didn't, it popped up on your screen too. I let him in.
Yeah, it did. I let the other two in. I just didn't notice him yet.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I don't think that all the participants in the second part of the meeting are here yet. So we'll take, does anybody have any?
Go into recess for 10 minutes?
We could, or do we have any public comments about anything? So we will recess at 1:50 and resume at 2:00.
To give everybody time to get here.
Yes. Everybody can chat again. Are you, did you stop the recording, Jeanette?
No, but I can. I'm pausing it. Yes. Thank you.
It's at 2:00. So it's my understanding that mother, some other people are planning to attend today.
So Martina Barnes and Casey Merritt, Martina emailed me and told me that she and Casey would be here in person today.
If I may interject. Yes. Sorry, I can't get, yes, this is Holly. I can't get my video to start. I have Martina and Casey on the line, another line, and they are saying that they, Martina, you're at the town hall?
They're at the town hall.
At the town.
At the town office.
Town office, and they're not seeing people.
Yep.
She's at the wrong building. On Route 100. What's the street address here? 102 Route 100, Westover. Okay. Um, we're also gonna need, well, we have these chairs. So once Holly comes back. Holly? Yes, can you hear me? Yes. Did you get relayed to them where we actually are meeting today? That's what I was trying to hear. You said Route 100 in Westover. Is that correct? To Route 100 in Westover. So if they put that into their phone, they should come right here and we'll wait. Will do. Okay, thank you. Yep. All right. So we're gonna continue our recess for five more minutes. Now recess at 2:08 PM. Well, we have a lot of faces here and I think not everybody knows who everybody is. So I think that introductions and whatever affiliation you might have, or if you're just an interested party, we should go around the room and probably do it on the video as well. So we'll start up here with the board.
Sarah Shippey, Board Vice Chair.
Vicky Capitani, Board Chair.
Dan Ballyadi, Selectman.
Phil Mahon, Selectman.
Marco?
Oh, Marco, it's me.
Time for.
Time.
But I'm just here.
I'm Casey Merritt, I'm the Manchester District Recreation Program Manager.
Okay.
Hi, Martina Barnes, I'm the Manchester District Ranger.
Michael Garber, Town Resident and Vice President of Deerfield Valley Stone Jumpers.
I'm Mike Purcell, Business Elder at Dover. I head up the Whistle, Mountain Bike Trail, or Mountain Bike Club, excuse me. I'm also a member of the Dover Economic Development.
Trails.
Tom O'Leary, Dover resident, Vice President of SOBT.
Mike Eldredge, Deerfield Valley News.
Parker Hye, Dover resident, Interested Party.
Chris Mayes, Planner from the Brown Road.
My folks Paul Fisher, Interested President.
Andy McLean, the Town Clerk in Dover, and I've represented the town in this process for a while.
Jim McDevitt, resident, Interested Party.
Eric Rocher, Economic Development Director, the Town of Dover.
Manny Johnson, City Police Chief, and also the Interested Party.
Great. So, and on Zoom, we have Nick?
Yeah, I'm Nick Bennett. I'm the Executive Director of the Vermont Mountain Bike Association.
And Tim?
I'm the Southern Vermont Trails Association.
Tim, you were slightly muted. Could you repeat?
Sorry, Tim Shannon. I am the President of the Southern Vermont Trails Association.
Edie?
Edie Mass, Interested Party, property owner on Handle Road.
Matt?
I am Matt Williams. I'm the ED at the Cudamount Trail Association.
And Holly?
Hi, everyone. I'm Holly Knox, I'm the Recreation Program Manager for the Green Mountain and the Finger Lakes National Forest.
And Jeanette?
Oh, just me. Yeah. Everyone knows who I am.
Jeanette Eckert.
I'm sorry, Jeanette Eckert.
Also Assistant Town Clerk.
Extraordinaire, as Richard said.
Okay. So we're here today to talk about the Back Country Ridge Trail project. That is a very exciting project that we are all super excited to get going. We have been working with, on this for a while. And the project is at a point, I think, where we need to understand where it's going, how it's going there, and what everybody is gonna be doing in the, in the project. And again, we are very excited to see the, the project come to actually fruition so that it can, we can, people can enjoy it. So I'd like to start with Andy McLean, who brought to, to the Dover Select Ward the concept of this project.
Thanks, Vicky. Jeanette, can you hear me? I know that there are issues with the microphone. I can come closer.
Should we have Andy sit up by the mic? Jeanette, could you hit, sit here, Andy?
So. So I don't know, Vicky, you know, what I, what you, what would be helpful, maybe a brief history and maybe a brief view of what's going on now, kind of a thing?
A brief history?
Yeah. My personal request is since you seem to have been the person in the room who's been affiliated the longest, you can kind of bring us from the past to the present.
Sure. Sure. Past to present. So, okay, so, and before I, how long do you plan on meeting? Is there a time limit on this?
Do you guys have a time limit? I, I would say an, an hour from now.
An hour sounds good.
Since we started late.
Okay. So, um, first of all, before I get into that briefly, I'd like to, I'd like to take, take the opportunity to maybe frame the meeting just a little bit. You know, you could look at this meeting as, as having come about because SOBT and myself don't get along very well. That I don't think would be helpful, and I don't think that, that would, that would be a waste of an opportunity if we did that. And if we were to try and assign blame or litigate who did what when, I think that would be a tragedy. I think that this meeting should be looking forward. It should be positive. I think that this project, Vicky said it well, we're all excited about this project and it has the potential to be awesome. We all want it to be awesome. And everybody who needs to make that happen, everybody who, who we need to make that happen is here in the room. So depending on what we do and what we say and how we behave, I think this can be hugely positive. So I'm not going to, and if I do, please correct me. I'm not going to get into what I may or may not think SOBT did wrong. I'm not gonna get into any accusations made by myself or them. It's gonna make for a much less interesting newspaper article on Friday. But, but I think we should be, stay positive and not, not use this opportunity to assign blame. So the other thing is, the other thing I'd like to say from the outset regarding SOBT and myself, I know that moving forward, SOBT has expressed they, they're not happy with me representing the town. And I tend to agree with them on that. I think that moving forward, I think my work, formally representing the town is done. I'll always be a resource. But I think that, you know, if that was a stumbling block, if everybody's on board, this Forest Service and the Select Ward, and there's a stumbling block regarding me representing the town and SOBT, don't worry about that. That stumbling block will be gone. All right. So the history of the thing. Back in 2007, some Forest Service attorneys came into the office and said, geez, you know, we need to do some title work on 500 acres off of Handle Road. The folks are looking to sell it to the Forest Service. I said, holy smokes, and the light bulb went off in my head because that 500 acres has a little thin arm, 50 feet wide that comes down and touches Handle Road. And Dover is comprised probably 25% of Dover's landmass is national forest. And the way the national forest acquired that land from paper companies, which bought it up from failed farms, basically you have town roads with a strip of private property along them. And behind that is national forest so that the public can't get from the town road to the national forest without trespassing on somebody's property. So there's thousands of acres on the ridge between Montslo and Haystack that is public land which the public can't get to. This was provided an opportunity to create some public access. Ken Fisher, God rest his soul, he passed away in 2010, had represented Tony Sosmo and a lot of the acquisitions of the Forest Service, put me in his truck and headed up to Manchester and talked with the Forest Service about this in 2007, maybe eight. And to make a very long story short, eventually the Forest Service decided this was an awesome project and should work together. So there's two major stages to the project. The first one was a standalone project that was put together by Carol Knight, Casey's predecessor's predecessor, and myself. And it was gonna be a hiking trail and a parking lot, an access road and trailhead. Forest Service was of the opinion that, hey, if this is a standalone project, we're saying no to everybody else to say yes to you. Everything you want is not practical. Start off with a hiking trail and perhaps expand it later. We said, sure. Carol Knight did a lot of work. I did a little work. And David Frankholm, Martina's predecessor, said, came to us finally after we, we got it all shipshape. And he said, Andy, we're gonna approve this tomorrow. I'm gonna, I'm gonna approve this. You've done everything we've asked. The Select Board has promised to fund it. And you and Carol have done a lot of work. I'm gonna approve this, but I would ask you a favor. We have this planning process. It's called Somerset IRP. It's for all of the acreage between, you know, Dover and Bennington and down to Reevesboro. And we need a project, a recreation project to round out that, that, that planning process for us to make it more palatable to the folks involved, the stakeholders. And this would be awesome if it was part of that project. It will add four or five years onto your approval process. In return, we will give you everything you're asking for, the backcountry skiing, mountain biking, machine-built trails, all that stuff. I came to you folks. I said, hey, we can have this approved tomorrow as a hiking trail and access. But this is what they're asking of us. We decided hold off four or five years. I said, it's gonna be a good deal more expensive. We're talking machine-built trails, et cetera. They'll need ongoing maintenance, whatever. Yes, we're on board, Economic Development Director on board. We move forward. The Forest Service, Casey's predecessor, Emily Lauderdale, is hired and she basically builds this project with me. Casey and I work very closely together. We're on speed dial. What does the town think of this? What does the Forest Service think of that? Should we put it here, there? Site visits and GPS tracks and, you know, I, we put together the project as it stands today. We talked a lot about implementation. I thought Emily would be here through implementation, but she's not. She got it approved. And she and David Frankholm, the Ranger, left. I believe Emily left the employment of the US Forest Service. David is somewhere else in the country. And Martina was hired and then subsequently Casey. So moving forward, there is some confusion regarding funding in the town. Okay, the, the Select Ward and various economic directors over the years, I've worked with, I think, four on this project, have made promises at the request of the Forest Service to fund various pieces of this project. You know, on the table today, between myself and SOBT, you know, our different ideas about that. It could be the town funds the parking area and we have no involvement in the trails on national forest land. That is funded through grants and SOBT is involved. We have no oversight. We have no partnership with the Forest Service on this. There's other models we could use where the town does fund some of that. I think those are justified by the history and the promises. But, you know, that's a disagreement and we don't need to get into why. Everybody's in the wrong. You guys can work that out. So, uh, let's see. What else do you need to know?
Wait, Mike. Everything comes to. You gotta come through me. I'm the only one. And I, I saw you and I was gonna let Andy finish and then I.
So I think, I think, you know, I think if you guys, if the Forest Service and the Select Ward can start on a path towards a partnership you both can live with regarding funding, oversight, and communication, we'll be doing well today. I think that is probably too much to ask to start in on the details of what's going on right now, what should go on and what is going on. Laying out the trails using volunteer help versus an RFP for a professional trail designer. The Forest Service's legitimate concerns regarding the size of the parking area and some of the backcountry skiing issues they've witnessed during COVID. Those things, we need to talk about them pretty soon. But I think for this meeting, what I would like to see is a very positive relationship developed between the Select Ward and the Forest Service regarding funding and a partnership.
Mike?
Just, for clarification.
Yes.
The location of the parking lot.
Yeah.
From what was in the back. You could explain why it's moved there.
Okay, sure. Basically, so the, the 500 acre chunk that was purchased by the Forest Service in 2008 that makes this possible has an 800 foot, 50 foot wide, 800 foot long strip that comes down between two pieces of property and hits Handle Road. It's only 50 feet wide, right? So my original thought was we put in an 800 foot access road in that 50 foot right-of-way to an area on national forest land where we can build a parking lot as big as we want. So, and that was the original proposal by the Forest Service, by Carol Knight. And Bobby was gonna build it. We were gonna pay for it, whatever. After, after the Somerset IRP boundary was expanded and we were sucked into that, and I started working with Emily, we got into details and nitty-gritty, we started talking to neighbors. I negotiated with Bear's Crossing and the neighbor south, Jacob Brown, who were not interested in an 800 foot access road up alongside their properties. I negotiated with them to grant us easements along Handle Road. The town actually owns the 50 foot wide strip of land that Handle Road is on. It's not an easement. It's not a town right-of-way. It's land that we own. A little, I think they're 20 by 50 feet, maybe? Two little easements. Just make that parking possible. The parking that was requested by the Forest Service at the time was 10 to 15 spaces. We gave them 13 spaces, one of which is handicapped sized and a clear, I believe, 10 foot wide section in the middle for the trail itself, so that nobody would park there. But it was through negotiations with the neighbors that we decided to put it on Handle Road. They didn't want that. We wanted to work with them. We thought that that was sufficient.
Any, any other comments about anything Andy said or clarifications? Okay. Um, so where to go from here? Is, it might be appropriate time for the Forest Service to explain what they envision with this project. Cause not everybody is on the same page here.
And when you ask that question, what aspect are you asking about? Like the, the project plan itself or, or are you asking more about that process of implementation?
A little bit of both, I think, in my mind. One, the, at a couple, a meeting a couple of weeks, a month ago, we heard that the parking lot had to be larger and that kind of set us, all of us, that we didn't know that. We had not heard that. We haven't, we, the town hasn't had the ability, had much dialogue with the Forest Service recently. So whatever insight, plan, and things that might have changed since we were last updated would be very useful.
I'll do my best.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Andy, for that interesting backstory to it all. Some of which I knew in other parts, you know, like say where we found out.
Yeah. Can you come up here as well? It's the only way we can get it on, on.
Recorded.
The recording. Thank you. Plus then you can have a place to put your plate. Not trying to balance it underneath.
Thank you.
Interrupted.
Somebody's speaking on the.
No, she was just telling me you needed to move on.
All right. So, um, we're going to start with the parking lot if you want. Basically, I mean, I don't know. I'm not totally sure when the last communication with the town was and what you're aware of and what you weren't. I came into the position post Emily Lauderdale last spring and have been working to, you know, figure out where this project was at and where we were going from there. And honestly, in that time period, next to nothing has happened as far as moving forward with this project. And we look forward to, you know, I can look back into the records that I have. They go not quite as far back as Andy just talked about, but I have, you know, information going back to 2015 that I was looking at. And, and so I realize this has been a slow-moving beast here that we would like to do our best to help us all get back on track, as I think you do too, to move forward. The project plan, as is written in the Somerset Integrated Resource Project, is what I'm going on as far as what the plan is. It did get moved into that project. And if you look at the environmental assessment, which I have, but you can find it online too. It's very specific about length of different trail segments and what those different trail segments are intended to be. And I don't know if that's something you want to review.
So it is.
Yes, that's exactly.
Is there still the?
It's right on, also on the Green Mountain National Forest's website, but it, it does take a little enabling to find your way to it.
So like the ADA accessible trail, that's still part of the project?
Yeah, the lower section of the trail. So let me just, let me just dig out that information if you want. So, um, this one works, but let me find it where it's a little more concise than that. So per the Somerset IRP, which in that, that environmental assessment is on page 22 and 23 that describes this project. I brought a map, but it's super small. So I don't know that that's gonna help everybody and certainly not the folks on the Zoom meeting. But two miles designated as Class III trail, which is three to four feet wide for mountain biking, hiking, cross-country skiing. Trail, which is three to four feet wide for mountain biking, hiking, cross-country skiing. This is what I'm calling the lower loop. Includes a one, a one point six mile segment from Handle Road to the southern. Mount Snow ski slopes and and a little half a mile loop off of that, so. Again, this is maybe too small to always show. It's just helpful to you guys at all if I like kind of hold this up. This is the little segment that he's talking about. It's fifty feet wide. Is that right? And this is, see, I can't really do this for all of you. My step here is a little helpful for at least most people. Here's the Handle Road. Here's that little narrow access to the Forest Service segment. This is the Deerfield Ridge Trail. This is Mount Snow. This is the area that we're talking about. So the kind of first stage of the project is. Is building this segment of trail that kind of connects to. The Mount Snow area and makes a little loop trail down at the bottom, right? A loop trail that can be used by easily, you know, accessed by. Members of the, you know, community. Two miles long cross-country skiing, mountain biking, hiking, et cetera. Kind of think of that as like phase one. Then a two and two point one mile class two trail, which is. Six to eighteen inches wide. So the way trails classes go is. Kind of the larger the number that more developed it is. So class two is a last developed trail for hiking and cross-country skiing only. I'm gonna have to stand back up again, which is to connect that lower loop to the Deerfield Ridge. Up to the ridge and that's like a hiking and what they call, you know, this is kind of the. My idea of the initial idea behind this was a backcountry ski zone. So backcountry skiing, if you're not a backcountry skier, people put little skins on their skis and they climb up and they ski down. So that would be what they call the skin track up to the top. And that also is a hiking trail that can connect you to the ridge trail. And then a half a mile class three snowmobile trail. And the only reason we're calling that a snowmobile trail. It's not gonna be an area that's gonna be used for snowmobiling. But I think the idea behind that, and again, this planning came before me, but it's kind of. For emergency access only. So somebody gets hurt on these ski glades that come down from the ridge. And need a ride out. This little collector trail at the bottom of each one of those slopes is designed that a snow machine can get up there. Tow the person, give the person a ride out or pull them behind in a sled.
So basically search and rescue.
Search and rescue. Yep, exactly. So it will be wide enough for a snowmobile for that use. So. That's the basics of it. There, there is gonna be a little bit of improvement to a wet area up on the Deerfield Ridge. Trail itself, I say a little bit of wetter laughing seat. I've seen pictures from the public that have sent it to me. You know, we're talking like five deep, deep wet areas, so that will require some building of boardwalk type things or something and that. That is also a part of this. Also part of this project, as written in the EA in the environmental assessment, is talking about. Kind of rehabbing or like decommissioning. Like non-authorized trails that are on that property currently and either. Either by hand, kind of revisiting them or if they're in wet areas, just letting nature take them back and so forth. So I, I know I've, I've been out there once, walking around and, you know, people have put up ski signs and everything. So we would kind of decommission all that and make it, make the new trails, the trail system in there. So that's. The gist of the project plan. Parking lot. So the parking lot, again, through the process of scoping and getting comments from the public and. Compromise, et cetera. The parking lot got moved down to the Handle Road on town property, so. We're interested in that part of the project too, because it's connecting to a trail system that's on forest land, so. However, the town would be more involved of that. Especially with the parking lot because, because it's on, it's on town property, so. Size of the parking lot, honestly, I have to really kind of dig back into. Fire records to find out how it got from who, you know, who recommended fifteen and how to get to thirteen. I don't know, but that's the size that. Me coming into this project understood to be thirteen or fifteen spaces or whatever. As far as it being larger than that. As I remember it, that was actually posed to me by Southern Vermont Trails Association, bringing up the. Concern about expanded, which is true. We are in agreement to this expanded interest in backcountry skiing across the state of Vermont. All of Vermont is seeing this interest growth. And there are places, other parts of the forest where. Parking is an issue up on the Rochester District. There is a backcountry ski area that has parking problems, you know, where people are parking all over the road and things. Because the parking lot isn't big enough. Now, will that be an issue with this particular area? I don't know. I guess it would be. You know, somewhat just judgment or guesswork, whether, whether a thirteen car parking lot would be big enough. I personally am open to whichever, whatever everybody agrees on. But I think we should consider whether, as best we can, whether a thirteen car parking lot is big enough. Or what might be the plan if it fills up and where would the overflow be? That would be something we should all talk about as part of this project. What else can I do for you?
Sarah.
And forgive me if I'm getting this wrong, but my understanding at one point, there's conversation about an accessible trail, a trail that could be used for. People who were physically disabled to gain access and that was kind of a unique feature. And so wondering if that's still in the plan, if that's a second or tertiary level.
Andy.
Should I jump in here for a second? So I'm not sure if that made it into anything left behind by Emily. But that was something that Emily and I talked about up to. Approval, that, that lower loop or at least some part of that, it would be awesome if that were an accessible trail. She was very excited about it. I was less excited about it until I started looking into it and, and got more and more excited about that. Part of the project, but I don't know if it's in your notes or if that's just something that Emily and I talked about, Casey.
Right, so. I don't. I don't know. Holly's probably looking it up right now while we're speaking, but. So Holly can jump in if she finds otherwise. I don't recall seeing the word accessible in the EA, however. I know as a forest, we are interested in expanding accessible trails on our district. Because we currently just don't have. Much of any right now. So we are working on, we are interested in. In making some accessibility, accessibility options.
Holly.
Now, I can say that from the Forest Service perspective, we're always seeking opportunities to make a trail accessible. We don't promise it in advance because terrain and other factors will dictate that. And while I have the floor, if you want, now I'm happy to. Address some of the larger questions of what the Forest Service wants from this project, or I can wait and do that when Casey's done too.
I think this would be a great time, Holly.
I agree.
Okay, so I want to acknowledge that I'm a step removed from this project and sometimes that. Can give a different perspective than being in the trenches. I, I am the rec program manager, but I previously held the same position that Casey has up in. Rochester and Middlebury, so I've worked on a lot of these projects. And I first just want to say, you know, what I see and I appreciate what Steve said earlier, because I see several organizations who share a common goal. And I think that's something to be celebrated. You have partners who are willing to bring funding. Partners willing to commit time and energy and you all want to have this incredible new resource in town, so I hope that that's being celebrated. But from someone who's led large recreation projects, I know that for a project to be successful. Really, the most important piece is harnessing the strengths that everyone brings to the table. And it's a buzzword nowadays to say the collective impact model, but I really. I really believe it's how, you know, Vermont, it's business as usual. It's coming together to use everyone's skills as. What we do, it's how we survive Irene. It's how we care for each other during COVID. It's, you know, how. We get these large projects done in small towns with small staffs and small partners, so. A few projects that I have led, I know, heard Brandon Gap mention Sherburne Trails in Killington, Blueberry Lakes, you know, it's. It's that collective ownership that the Forest Service wants to see in this project. It's not. My idea, it's not my funding. It's how do we get this done and what can I do to contribute to that? So we have typically, you know, leaned on the Vermont Mountain Bike Association and Catamount Trail Association. Cause those chapters and those organizations bring professional, professional trail builders to the table. And they provide volunteers that commit to that long-term maintenance after the trails are built, so. Even if the trail work is funded by someone else, Vimba has the trail builder relationships. They have the experience to know what builders are best suited for the terrain. And we have successfully worked together for decades, you know, doing this type of work and it's part of our long-term relationship. And I want to repeat, if you didn't hear when I just said that, we work with local chapters to get professional builders to, to bid on a project. And we review the builder's designs, we review the builder's experience, and we help the chapter make that selection. But we have also worked with towns on those same trail projects. And we call on your road maintenance expertise. We call on your, your permitting and your construction expertise. So very similar to your town, I would say that, you know, the town of Killington built and maintains the parking lot for the Sherburne Trails. So, but when I think of what I want the Forest Service to come away from this project, it's. Seeing everybody get away from the ownership in one piece of the project or mired in what happened to date and focus on. What's the project as a whole and what can you do to get it towards that end goal, so. Don't worry about who's doing the trail or who's doing the parking lot. We're all doing the project as a whole.
Well, that for me is, is nice to hear that you actually like, you do an RFP process. And, and vet all the, the potential bidders and I, I think that the board feels good about that too.
It aligns with how we do things within the town, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's very familiar.
So, now the funding of this project. Yes, we have committed to building a parking lot. What else for funding and maintenance are you expecting? Or hoping that the town is going to kick in?
You want me to address that, Casey? Yeah, sure, so.
I mean, I'm.
Yeah, Holly, go, go for it.
Yeah, so in any project that we do with partners, going into it, we're all looking for funding, so. What can the town bring to the table is something that's, you know, exciting to us with. Other towns, if they've been able to put aside some of their rec budget, if they've been able to write a state recreational trail program, if you write RTP grants. Partners can also write those grants. We can seek funding, so I think it's understanding what's the total cost of the project. And what can anybody bring to the table? So to say that we have an expectation of how much you're putting on the table, I, I, I don't know that we have. Have one. I think that we want to understand the cost of the project and who can help get us to the funded point.
I think that's very fair. I think that none of us understand what the cost of this project is. So how do we get to that point? An, an estimated cost of project. Do you want to answer that? I know. She's thinking, I think. Somebody's thinking.
I mean, yes, I can, I can jump in on it. I mean, there's different ways of getting to the cost. I think it depends on how. It's hard to speak to the construction of the parking lot because it is going to be on town land. I don't know if you're using town equipment, so I won't go into. The cost of that. If it was gonna be contracted, obviously even get bids. When it comes to the cost of the trail network, one of the things that we would like to see. Often when you are going to have a professional trail builder, they do the design and the build. It's much more challenging to build a trail that you haven't designed. And so trying to fund upfront the cost of having all of it at least designed and maybe. Sections have to be designed in phases or they're designed, what we consider like pin flagging, where you're getting down to the more nitpicky details. Rather than a larger corridor. But having that identified, usually when a builder does a design and build, they can tell you after the design, the cost.
Mike.
As part of this project, you mentioned the various parts. It seems to be like there are certainly three distinct parts. There's certainly the parking lot, there's the backcountry skiing and the ridge trail itself. That, you know, we addressed or need to come up with a solution for that swap. But in my, my mind, the parking lot is a town deal, as is really the ridge trail. Cause that was, and if anything, when we speak about funding and or some coming from Dover. Some of that funding could come from Wilmington as well, because it's certainly a by-town project, that ridge trail that's approved. And has been approved and stands alone. Before we even do a trail building, et cetera. So when you're talking about funding, I think the town. Should plan on that and as far as cost goes, then if that goes to. What the Forest Service will be happy with as a solution, because I'm trying to come up with price, but we are trying to come up with prices for that boardwalk. But there, I'm just saying, there's three different parts there where funding can be considered.
Sarah.
So, Holly. I, it makes perfect sense that you have no idea what, what something's gonna cost until it's actually been designed, right? Cause you don't know what's going into it. Do you have any range or sense of what it would cost to bring a designer to the table? To get, to get input and come up with the design that all the parties will have buy-in on?
That's a challenge, actually. I would look to see if Nick maybe has an idea on that, because we often, when we are having somebody come, they're actually designing it and preparing to build it. I know that. Yeah, it would be a ballpark to say, I don't even know how many miles you're talking about. Gosh, Nick, do you have any idea?
Were we talking about the, you mentioned a couple loops, right? Right, we're talking about basically four and a half.
I would say a couple thousand dollars, but that's a real, real swag.
For the kind of design plan and estimate, estimate of construction cost.
Yes, because a lot of times builders don't charge for the design work if they know that they have the project. I mean, it's charged, but it's embedded within the construction. Costs that they are sending to us. Sorry, and I think Nick was gonna try to say something.
I was gonna echo that same sentiment that if there are stages, Holly, as you noted, that for a builder to give a rough estimate, oftentimes they'll come and walk the terrain. They'll do, it's often more virtual in terms of assessing, but that often is done without a specific charge, but then. By the time they're investing, the days to go and walk and, and pin flag and then go back and they're, they're. Usually that's once the project is actually, they have a good sense that they're going to have earned that work. So it's less around, there's a design cost, okay, then there's a, a build cost, but typically. Twenty-five to thirty, five thousand dollars a mile is not uncommon, but as Holly noted, it depends entirely on the terrain you get into. And that type of thing, so it can certainly vary, but it's not design then build. It's more of that design build. I, I did want to, but if it's, would it be all right for me to make one other? Comment, just building off, it's something that I think Mike noted. I just wanted to build off what Holly said and it's the reason that, that Matt and I, Matt representing the Catamount Trail. Myself representing Vimber here, that, that twenty-five year history of developing and building. Mountain bike trails or trails in Vermont and the longstanding experience with the Forest Service. Of figuring out what is the most cost-effective and efficient way to build sustainable trails that our chapters, SOFTA in this case. Are then responsible for maintaining for many years to come is, is that model is one that has been. Both for us and I think for the Forest Service quite successful in terms of figuring out how to develop and then ultimately fund these trails as well. The other piece that Holly alluded to is that we find a way i- in, in that model of sort of collectivism. We find a way to, to read, to get the funding, combination of Forest Service, Holly and, and others pursuing funding on their end. We, we develop and sort of recruit funding. Local communities bring the dollars to the table too. There's not a. There's, there's not an idea of you're on the hook for X and you're on the hook for Y. It's that collectivism of, we will find. We'll find a way as we go along to make, make those trails happen, but the only thing I did want to articulate is that. The role, where if we, if we're talking about what do our organizations bring to the table and, and SOFTA as a chapter of Vimba and Catamount Trail. It is that longstanding history and expertise in building and then stewarding the, the trails themselves.
Any other comments? Mike?
So I, I want to be clear. Does SOBT A, Andy? Or, or who took, was anyone designed this, this trail system and it's something we can implement or we started from scratch? And it's something we can implement, or are we starting from scratch?
Well, like, oh. Um, I, I think there's a concept, uh, that those trail builders will. People that respond to the RFP will be able to design and say this looks good or that looks good and I can come up with a price, there's nothing. It's only old cross-trend ski trails, some of which are terrible. And some go back to nature and others that will provide a, a framework for SOBT to work with, uh. Trail builders.
Andy?
Um, yeah, so, uh, Mike, I'm not aware of any design currently. We were given, uh, some notes, uh. By SOBTIA, a meeting between them and the Forest Service where they talked about SOBTIA laying out the trails. For National Forest Service biologists and scientists to then do their ecological assessment. That would be the only design piece that is currently ongoing. And it sounds like, I, I love what's been said so far, like if the Forest Service and the town wanted to get together on a. On an RFP for a trail designer, that that work might be put on the shelf until a professional could lay out the trails. Maybe with an eye to the possibility of a, uh, of an accessible trail or towards, you know, uh, ongoing maintenance costs or whatever. Fantastic idea, but not, not that I'm aware of, Mike, no design yet.
Yeah, I, I, I will concur with that. I think there's been initial walkabout just as a real general thing and, and, and we have the. General vision for it. In the environmental assessment, the Somerset IRP, uh, you know. The loop trail, the trail up to the ridge, et cetera, but what we need is, right, like a professional trail. Builder who builds these trails and has a history of it. Who has the expertise to lay it out on the ground in the appropriate places at the appropriate grades. You know, for the different classes of trails, that the different section, you know, sections would be and, and these people do this kind of thing, you know, you can. You can go and look at trail systems they've built in other places and, and, uh, that's not expertise that. Somebody like me has, so, um, I think that that's. The best way and that's what, that's what Nick is talking about here, what we're all talking about here, right? Like, uh, choose, uh. You know, a company, a trail building company to come in and actually give us that design, that layout. Give us an estimate. And move forward from there. Which requires some, you know, some processes too. At that point, then the Forest Service brings in various environmental specialists who have to review that and make sure that it is, uh, not. Breaking any laws, et cetera, you know, and so there's that stage too that does take some time as well. Heritage reviews and botany reviews and, and all of those, um, I call them theologists have to come in then after we've laid out the trail. Look things over as well, so. Figure that into it.
Now, now whose hand is up first? Uh, Sarah? Oh, well, actually, I think Nick and Tim might have beaten me. Okay, um, all right, Tim? You're, you're.
I'll start at Nick first, I'll let Nick take the start to start.
Okay, Nick?
Sure, the, the one thing I just wanted to mention is sort of trail building, how this process typically works, which is not the context of contracting a, a. Company that goes and executes a project to spec and then comes back and it's, and sort of like somebody that might do a, a project in your house. And then Holly and others at the Forest Service could speak to this as well, but what our chapters do when I work with a trail builder. That is a relationship process that it heavily involves the chapter in terms of guiding them, oftentimes on a daily basis, some of the project we have. Projects we have going on in the Rochester District, we have, uh, chapters out there every day working to. Sort of guide and be involved in the process, you know, they're very much part of that team. It is a contracted builder who is a professional, but it's not a standalone process. So very much the idea of, of. Our, again, going back to, and, and one of the things that I'm really hopeful, and Andy alluded to this as well, will come out of this meeting, is a very clear articulation of roles. But one of the things that we have a longstanding history of and, and that we work to support our chapters through is that idea of. Not only securing a contractor to build a trail, but that trail builder then creates a relationship that over, and many times it can be months, even years to construct. These trails, because then our chapters ultimately, at the end of the day, are the ones that will be responsible for ensuring those are well-maintained. Uh, into the future, just to, to articulate that model, it's less, you know, it's not put out a bid, pay somebody and then come back and, and. See a finished product, it's a process that, that deeply involves the volunteers that, that comprise our chapters.
Tim?
Uh, yeah, uh, uh, kind of to what Nick was stating, you know, the work that we've done so far in the woods, out in the Forest Service trail with pin flagging. Is to start to set up a better idea of corridors, so when we get a trail designer and a builder in there, we can walk them through. Not to say that it's the final design, but to help that guide their eye and guide where we've worked through. Because, uh, you know, like our executive director has spent a lot of time in there looking at the terrain and the resources that could help guide, like, hey, we need to avoid these wet areas. These are, uh, sensitive ecological areas, and so it helps assist that process. Um, and, and I know working with the Forest Service in this project, um, as, as the. It's evolved and we've looked at different areas for success, you know, the Dorset area project has been something we've looked at as well, which is. A lot of hand-built and on steep terrain, um, in a rocky environment that I know has been supported by both a professional trail building group and the. Uh, Dorset area mountain bike, uh, group that's been helping out as well, which is a volunteer trail building group.
Thank you. Sarah, so a couple, a couple of things, um, came up a- as you guys were talking too, but I'll go back to my original thought, which is. So is our next step then to come together to write an RFP for trail design? Is that the next thing that should happen?
I think so.
Okay, and is, and is that something that? The town? Can do with? Can all three parties be engaged in that process?
Right, or not, you know, I, I don't have experience of having done that before, so I mean, I, I would think so. Can I, can I call on Holly to help?
Yes, Holly?
She just phoned a friend. Yes, you know, it's. How the process works depends on where the funding is coming from, obviously, if it's coming from the Forest Service and it goes into an agreement. The agreement for trail design and building would likely be with Vermont Mountain Bike Association in this situation. And then they follow their processes. But yes, to answer your question, can everybody be involved, please? When we did the Sherburne Trails, it was. Again, I was in Casey's position, myself, the town manager and the head of their local chapter up there, constantly working through what this is going to look like. If the town is funding it, it follows your RFP processes, but we don't want you operating in a vacuum either. So I think we want everybody to be working together, so we're all on the same page.
Mike?
Well, to go to your question about the RFP, so the RFP that you're talking about. Would involve, say, the, the mountain bike section or the trails in the national forest versus, you know. The work that can still be done on the ridge trail and or separately the parking lot. There seem to be three items there, that's why.
Well, I think that the town is going to build the parking lot. We could do it the most inexpensively. Than any, more expensive than anybody else, we have the equipment, we buy in bulk, we, we know how to build parking lots. So I don't think that the parking lot is really. Uh, if, if we can build the smaller parking lot, um. I don't know where we put the eighty, eighty car parking lot, but, um, if we build a small, a small parking lot, the town could do that and we've committed to doing that. So my, my point is. Will it jumpstart this project? And will we get it going faster if a town commits to funding that? Planning and design? Will it go, will it speed up the process? Holly?
Yes, having funding in hand can always speed up a process, so. If you're speaking specifically to having like a trail design, yeah.
Okay, Sarah? So we're, but what I, I guess, what, just to reiterate, what you're saying is, so if the town were to say, okay, we're. Regardless of what happens past the parking lot, the town is committed to getting the parking lot built. We know that the, the rest of the project is going to benefit from having that parking lot in place, right? We all agree having people have access is right. So the town can say, we're going to build a parking lot, we know where it makes sense to put it, we know where logistically we're kind of forced to put it. And we will get our, we will get up to the, the, um, access to the national forest land. And then at that point, we become one-third of the partnership that works past that line. Does that sound right?
Yes, I think the whole project is a group partnership, I don't think that it has to be, we paid for the parking lot, so now we have our in. Um, but I do think too, what I would urge as caution, when I hear that an area is really wet, two things. One, I don't want anybody's hopes to get built up in regards to an accessible trail. Robert Frost, if you've been up there in like the Goshen Rippton area, hundreds of thousands of dollars and it is less than a mile. I'm talking almost a million at this point, that was, um, Leahy designated funding for that, so. The goal of an accessible trailer, I want that to be an, uh, a goal, but just keep in mind that it can be very expensive. Having that in mind too, besides just an accessible trail, anytime you are hearing that. It's a very wet area, we want to know that we can build, we don't want a. A two-car parking lot, if we are bringing people to an area where we don't end up ever having a trail system, I'm not saying that could hap-. I'm not saying it's not going to happen. But you don't want to get someplace and find out that this just isn't buildable terrain, I have not seen it to say, it sounds like other people have, so. Just want to make that caution of getting too much of the cart before the horse.
Comments?
Joe? Taking this all in, at this point here, we are going to be doing. You know, uh, having people access that area up in there. I, I take, take for you, Holly, that you, you, you haven't seen the area, but I think we're going to be able to utilize it. I don't think we would have gotten in there ten years, the area is going to be utilized. My thought process is all parties are here. We have agreement for the thirteen space parking lot. If we're going to bring a trail builder, we're going to bring people in. Does it make sense for us to put the thirteen space parking lot? So people know number one, something is happening. We can put a sign there, I know that there's other areas around our town that have two or three spots. For national forest access with no trail. So there's different spots that you can go park and just walk into the national forest. So would there be a problem with putting that there and allowing people to walk in there now? And start a trail that is, so people can get some excitement, some buy-in to what we're trying to do? Or is that something that we're, got a bit, too many people there too quick? I mean, I think once we do that, I think we'll have more buy-in, something's going to happen and put a sign there, start to advertise, market, hey, this is going to happen.
Future home of.
Future home of whatever, people are going to park there and look at the sign, we get more buy-in, more interest. We can put the parking lot in probably, if our road commissioner was here right now, he could tell us how quick he could have it done. Everyone's on this project, has been involved, you know, Sarah and myself have been on the board a lot longer. We have committed to it, we have the easements, we can do it, it can happen very fast. If all the parties here agree, let's start with the thirteen parking lot. Then the trail builder that comes has a place to actually park their car and know where they're going to go. Right now, you can't even do that. So does that make sense to all the parties here that we do that? Then start working on our RFP program that we all work together in agreement? Yes, I understand Mike really likes his ridge trail and I get that, I appreciate that much, it'll happen. It just may not happen tomorrow. The first thing, and just like the Forest Service said, is the loop to the bottom of Sun, so, to the bottom of Sunbrook. We could actually bite through Mount Snow and back, we could hike to Sunbrook and back. It could actually possibly happen, maybe not this year, but in the spring, fall of next year, obviously we have to still go through the national forest. So that's what I'm wondering, if we should actually start with that? Any agreement not to start with that? I guess.
I first want to just chime in and say. This is what makes it a beautiful partnership, because you were asking for that buy-in, because you can do whatever you want on town land, right? So that's an incredible first step to say, are we all in this together? I just want to acknowledge that. And second of all to say, you know, is, Martina can chime in when she wants, as long as we think that it's not going to be leading people to create damage where. You know, you can hike anywhere on the national forest, it doesn't have to be on a trail, we don't want people who are starting to maintain trails and make it. More challenging for a builder or they're creating sort of erosion or different challenges, but if it doesn't seem like that is an issue. Then no, I agree, and I think seek short-term wins, if you can put in an easier trail that's. Maybe you have to get through a little bit of the wet area to get where it's easier builder, building. Uh, maybe that's something you seek too, so people have something to go to right away before you tackle the wetter building areas where maybe it's more challenging. But Martina should weigh in, she's, she's in charge.
Hands up on the screen though.
Okay.
You want to jump in first, Tim, or?
Yeah, sure, um. Uh, Joe, like, I love the passion for the parking lot and, but to kind of. Reiterate what Holly said is, in this area, we do see a lot of traffic already and we have trails that are back there that are looking to be, um. Uh, decommissioned. And so by putting the parking lot in prior to the creation of at least the connection to the new trail unit might be a little, um. Early and, and might put users out there that we don't want back there just yet. The second piece is that we need to ensure that the trails connect, uh, to the designated either loop. Or to the backcountry zones, because if we only have the trail that just goes up to, um, Mount Snow. There is no goal to that location, or then they're heading to the ridge and that's something that Mount Snow should be aware of as well and. Um, and have a, an opportunity to share their voice on.
Nick?
Yeah, thanks, and one thing I just wanted to articulate too, in the same way that it makes complete sense for the town to read as well articulated, you all are the experts in. Building and designing the parking lot, granted, as, as was noted, that's something that. Still, there should be the SOFTA and Forest Service need to be informed and need to be kind of kept at a speed to make sure that the parking lot's in the right place, there are a sufficient number of spaces. Those are some of the concerns Tim alluded to as well. I just wanted to, to turn to, on the trail side of things, similarly ensure that. One of the th- the reasons that, and I think Andy brought this up very early on, that the reason that this meeting has, has become quite. Necessary is to articulate who is playing what roles in those processes, so while an RFP for. Trail construction does feel like a soon-to-be step on the trail side. Ensuring sort of similarly who's on point for leading that process and then how will the other stakeholders be engaged, I think is a really important thing, cause I think the idea of. Collectively, we will write, well, we will do the RFP without indicating who's kind of playing point in those roles could lead to. Ongoing confusion in terms of who's, who's really on, on. A sort of, you know, has the pen to, to lead that process forward, so that was just one thing I wanted to bring up as, as worthy of discussion.
Um, I just wanted to say, I, no disrespect, I picked my daughter up at three thirty, but I appreciate everybody being here and apologies that I had to leave.
And I thought we might as well, but. But thank you, thank you.
Um, yeah, hi, it's Martina Barnes, uh, just to, um. Oh, I guess.
Yes.
Hard to hear her, yes. Oh, I, I don't even have that, it'll be really quick, um. But thanks for the opportunity to be here and I know, I think I met the, there were select board on Zoom when I did my brief introduction when I first started, but. Yeah, I'm really grateful to Casey and Holly for helping, um, present the. Forest Service perspective on this project and our, uh, shared excitement in seeing this, you know. To fruition and implement, getting into that implementation phase, so. But, um, yeah, I just want, regarding the parking lot, I mean, I guess one potential suggestion that I, I have just listening to everyone chime in is. Maybe is doing a site visit out there to even just, you know, to get the key members out there in the near future. Um, to do, even though I know it's, we're, we're not professional trail builders, but just at least to get us. Get, set eyes on it and, uh, do a walkthrough in some of these areas, um. Cause I know I haven't been out there myself, um, and, and just to. As we talk about next steps, that might be one interim next step that, um, a few, few of the key players might, um, I think might be a good. Potential, uh, next step and then, um, regarding that, yeah, the parking area, obviously it's not for us to say what or what, whether you want to build one or not, but. I, um, have to concur a little bit with, I think, what, what Nick was saying and Holly just to maybe, or. Urge a little bit of caution initially and we have to get out there, do a site. urge a little bit of caution initially, and we have to get out there, do a site visit, possibly um, you know, do that first, just to get a, a little bit better sense of um, what the area looks like. Because I know in other towns that are on the Manchester Ranger District, um, they're, you know, with unauthorized uses. Specifically motor, a lot of motorized unauthorized use. It just, once there is a parking lot, there, there can be um, you know, some people, you may see increased use um, that could potentially make the implementation of the actual project. We want to see more challenging um, down the line. So, I mean, it just, but of course, it's, it's up to you. But um, just to urge maybe a little bit of caution on that, um, I, I would.
Sarah? So then, what might make sense is for the town, for the town, people from the, you know, from the town who are invested in the trails to talk to road commissioner and work out sort of a plan and a design for where the parking lot could go and how we're gonna construct it, but maybe not actually put the shovels in the ground just yet. But at least then we're saying, here's where we're envisioning putting it. And then the people working on the trails will say, and here's where we're gonna connect on further. So we all have. So, I mean, something's gotta be first, right?
I think totally designed, yeah, that makes sense to me.
Okay. I think the idea of a site visit is a very good idea as well. And, and we will do it at your convenience, um, the, the Forest Service. Joe?
I, I'm, I'm in agreement with all the site visits. I just wanna ask Andy, have we done site visits previous with other previous staff members that they walked out there with their opinion of the?
Yeah, yeah, we have. Yeah, we have. So, I believe SOVTA uh, was out there with Casey at some point in the past. We were a part of that. Um, we did uh, bring a troop of probably eight Forest Service employees out there. Um, there were members of what has become SOVTA in that group for a big site visit immediately prior to approval. Where the parking area is, we have um, an engineered plan. We hired Merrill Mundell to do that. Um, uh, he needs to do some more work before uh, with Travis to um, deal with sewer pipes and every, all this kind of business. Um, there are trails on the property currently, if you park on the side of the road, which is dangerous in the parking area. Uh, one benefit of the parking area that you should consider, regardless of all the very good points you've made so far, is that it's a dangerous area to access, handle road. And uh, nowhere parked. So um, there are trails and a trail map actually published by Bear's Crossing, their homeowners association, which you can access immediately off of Handle Road and walk up through that fifty-foot piece and onto a trail network that they have. There's other trails on that property that are part of what used to be when Jim McGovern owned the Hermitage, the Hermitage in cross-country trails system that went from, you know, Sunbrook all the way down to the Hermitage. All those trails are in there. Those trails are being used by the public currently. It's just that they're being used by the folks who live along Handle Road and whose properties abut the national forest and, and the condo owners. Um, primarily Bear's Crossing, who um, abut the national forest and have a fairly decent trail network in there that's marked. And some of those um, are what eventually will be discontinued or uh, reclaimed. Um, but uh, the usage generated by this parking lot will probably be a very small percentage of what's currently being used today by the homeowners on that.
So Andy?
Yep.
Because there's so many new players, do you think it would be beneficial for a, a site visit?
I absolutely do. I absolutely do. I think so for a number of reasons. Because it helps you folks understand when you're discussing things in a meeting, what everybody's talking about. When I, when I say the fifty-foot wide strip of land, you'll say, oh gosh, that's what it looks like. And oh, I walked that trail. I noticed the wet spots, the little muddy spots that it goes through and where it might be better routed and what a professional trail designer might have to contend with. And, and it also helps us come together as a team. You know, like what Holly's talking about, you know, uh, it, it's a good, it's a good time, you know?
We just need to park somewhere else.
Yes, I can help you with that, but yes.
So I think that would be.
Hold on, Mike has his hand up, Joe.
No, I think it would be valuable, just like um, I'm selling a property that's been tested by an engineer. New engineer, it's not gonna take the old engineer's stuff. The new engineer wants to come and, and visit it. So it would certainly increase your comfort levels and, and ease the conversation. Key to, to do that.
Now, Joe? Yes, Joe?
So, we, we're at our hour, cookie.
I know.
So we need to set up a site visit. Sounds like the National Forest Service would like to do a site visit. Obviously, SOVTA, I see Tim's hand is raised, and Catamount Association, you'll do the site visit. Where all parties are here, so we can make that date that would like to go for a site visitation. Does that make sense to do something?
Hold on, a lot of hands up. Okay, fair.
But in the interim, I want to start working with Travis. We'll get out, we'll mark where that fifty-foot area is so that they have the understanding. But I also wanna have Travis give us a firm detail, how long it's gonna take, what do we need for dirt and a plan in place and get with Merrill Mundell, so we can complete that on Eric's side. That'll be something Eric would work on, I would think, on the parking lot side. And after that meeting, if the three parties, SOVTA, Catamount, and the National Forest Service, yeah, maybe we don't put in the thirteen spots, but let's have a spot, three spots. So that we can at least access it. I can personally drive there and walk in there, okay? Like you said, the National Forest Service, I understand what Tim says, that the access, we don't want people there. People, from what Andy is saying, are already there. Let's make it safer. Let's put up a sign and make sure. If it's agreed upon on our site visit. So does that sound good?
Wait, I want, uh, Tim has his hand up.
Yeah, I, I wanna go back to what Nick said. I think it's gonna be really important here as we move forward to be clear about our processes and who's responsible for what and how we all work together. Um, that is clearly the leading issue on why we've gotten to this point with challenges, is we don't have clear guidelines. And so some things that I know that will help us, that will outline in the future is, so when SOVTA is uh, helping and assisting with this project, is who do we report to? Do we come directly to the select board at a select board meeting? Or do we report to the Trails Committee meeting? Um, and what that process is. Um, the second thing is that from our organization is, is we're gonna continue to seek funding that's gonna try to expedite this process as well. And we can access different sources of money. The Forest Service has sources of money, the town has sources of money. And I think it's important that we acknowledge that where money potentially can come from, how we're going about getting it, and what happens when that money comes in. Um, and so that, you know, in the event that, say, we do get some uh, private donations for this project, would the town be able to save some of that money, maybe invest more in a project like Forest Hill, where in the Dover Town Forest that just expands the taxpayers' dollars into additional projects, which is, the town clearly um, is, is interested in, in getting, moving quickly. Um, so just getting those things clarified as well will be really important as we move forward.
Thank you. Eric?
And I just wanted to state, I think the role of the town in this, I understand the relationship with Bimba at SOVTA and the US Forest Service and that there's processes to how all of these things fit together. I think our involvement in it and what we wanted it to be is just that we were a part of the conversation, so that if we were at some point called to fund a piece of the project, we weren't coming in two years later without any idea of what had really happened in the interim. So I think that's the extent of what we're looking for in that involvement. It's just that we are in the need to know what's hap, kind of what's happening. And then I think we can try to establish uh, you know, those, those meetings between, you know, say SOVTA and, and town. Um, and then, you know, with the, with the contact to the Forest Service. So however we figure that out, Tim, I totally agree. Like, let's figure out what those roles are and how we all work together, so that when decisions are being made, everybody feels like they're sitting at a table when the decision's made. That's, that would be my answer.
Tim, is your hand up again?
I apologize, I left it up that time.
No problem. Yes, Casey. We're happy to leave, I can tell.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to volunteer to be, you know, kind of a coordinator of it. I don't know, like, if that seems good with everybody, then um, I know I kinda suggested previously, I'm really, I'm actually like, this is fabulous. To me, I'm really, I'm gonna leave here feeling really good about this meeting that we all came together and that everybody is able to communicate um, together like this. So I kind of would encourage this sort of model to continue. I'm happy to kind of be the point person, you know what I mean? And um, I did have an intention of, I might have to recruit somebody to help me put it together. But to create a document that everybody could kind of tie into, where we could keep track of the project. But um, I think coming together, I love the um, site visit idea. I would like to go out there again. I have concerns about the wetland aspect of this. It's kind of stressing me a little bit, so to get everybody out there and discuss that. Um, but uh, you know, as things, I can be the communication point person. Does that make sense?
I, I think that we would like you to be that person.
The other thing too is, I would love to make it a select board meeting. So we as select board, it's an actual meeting. We can zoom it with a, I don't know how good the service is there. But we can make it where the whole town has buy-in to it, where if we have to, maybe we have to have a bus. There's so many people coming, you have to have something where it's an actual select board meeting with all the parties and, and make it more.
Walk and take pictures.
Take pictures of it and everything. We can put it up on our Dover website. Maybe get the Bytown also committee involved in this. Let's get this off the ground. Exactly.
I support that heavily.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Tim, are you, are you speaking now? You, are, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, uh, Joe, I support that heavily. It's what we just did with the town of Stratton, um, for their project in uh, in the Stratton Town Forest, and that works extremely well. And, and we recommend that model is coming on out and it being a select board meeting.
Sarah? Let's pick a date. Do we, can we pick a few dates and figure out what, what works for people? If we give Eric four or five dates and we could do a Google?
What I'm thinking is we start, if you guys can send me some potential dates and times, I can send a Google poll to the rest of the interested parties, as long as everybody else is okay.
How long would this um, site visit be? I have no idea.
For this department lot or parking lot plus?
So I would say to be inclusive of all um, abilities, um, you know, an hour. We're not gonna go up to the ridge. You'll, you'll see plenty in an hour.
Okay, so um, Eric, send everybody a reminder, ask them for dates and times that would work for them.
If that okay with all parties online as well.
But the Forest Service needs to be there, so um, they should be in that first round. They get to pick the dates that we're gonna pick. Right, yeah.
Can I just make a suggestion while we're all here, and I, I love the Google poll and everything? Is, is it possible to do it in two weeks at the same time, two o'clock, while we have some people here that might have?
I can't.
I have to look at my calendar.
Yeah, we, I think that's fair. So send it to the Forest Service, throw, they can pick, pick dates and times. And then, then bring it to the rest of the group. Yeah. And if we get a full quorum select board, it will be a more, more insight visit meeting, yes. All right, are we, I, I think we've made good progress today. I hope everybody is happy with the, the tone and the uh, outlook and the future, and I know I am, and, and I'm even more excited. Barbara?
I would just say that because I was coming in, getting bits and pieces and reading the newspaper and not knowing what was going on, I think this was a very productive meeting, so you should all be proud of.
And thank you for traveling over from Manchester. We totally appreciate it. And for everybody else who zoomed in today, we appreciate your expertise. Um, and this is new to us, so thank you very much. So with that, we're gonna adjourn the meeting at three twenty-six PM. Thank you.